Please come to order, please join me in the pledge and lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you please? Is this on? Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Young.
Here.
Branderhorst.
Here.
Banstra.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spore.
Here.
Could I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
For.
Manstra, was that Hopkins? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstra.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Motion passed. So before we get to the swearing in ceremony of our new police officer, I just want to recognize Captain Hossi, who most of you know just graduated from the FBI National Academy. I think he spent 11 weeks in Virginia. Just some information about that. The FBI National Academy was established in 1935 and provides advanced investigative management, fitness training to senior officers who are proven leaders within their organizations. To date, more than 46,000 men and women have graduated from the FBI National Academy. Captain Hossi was in the 250th class with students from 49 U.S. states and 24 countries. He spent 11 weeks at Quantico, Virginia, attending the academy. The students study undergraduate and graduate college-level courses through the University of Virginia, including law, behavioral, and forensic science, terrorism, leadership development. And at the end of the course, students complete the famed Yellow Brick Road, a rigorous 6.1-mile physical fitness obstacle course. If they pass, they get their yellow brick. Well, Captain Hossi has returned to us recently with his yellow brick, new knowledge, and lifetime friend. So congratulations, Captain Hossi. Welcome home.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to... Going to administer the oath of office for our new police officer, Shawn Mason. So Shawn, if you want to join me up front here. I believe... Captain, there's got some of your fellow officers here who are going to join us. We're going to administer this oath of office. So this is the City of Pella, oath of office, State of Iowa, Marion County, Pella, Iowa. So if you'll repeat after me. Okay, I, Shawn Mason.
I, Shawn Mason.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer...
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer.
In the City of Pella...
In the City of Pella.
County of Marion...
County of Marion.
State of Iowa...
State of Iowa.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the force.
Thank you.
Welcome, Shawn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. It appears it must be all family members. Thanks for coming. All right, we'll move on with our meeting. So I would like to reappoint Joe Wyler to the Airport Committee. Council initially appointed Joel to fill a vacancy on this committee in April of 2022. He has attended all meetings during his term. If approved, Joel's new six-year term would expire on January 1, 2029. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For.
Branderhorst, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, at this time, we have an opportunity for public forums. So anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'd like to start with prayer. Is that all right? Our dearest Father in heaven, how majestic is your name. We thank you for who you are and your watchful eye upon each of us. We come before your throne here at this city council meeting. We know you determine who leads and who does not, all for the glory to you. This town, Pella, was named by our founding fathers as a refuge in your name. Even on our city's plaque, we have Psalm 46, verse 1. God is our refuge and our strength. With that foundation, Lord, we bring to your throne these men and women who have oaths and promised to govern and lead our city. We bring Don DeWort, Mark DeYoung, Les Spore, Lynn Branderhorst, Calvin Banstra, Spencer Carlson, Dave Hopkins, and their advisors, including Mike Nardini. Lord, we ask that your Holy Spirit ignite wisdom and knowledge in them, guiding them as they act as your ambassadors. Lord God, we ask you to untangle any confusions over some issues and remind them how much you love them, that you truly are their refuge and strength. You are all to all of us. Remind us of what that means as we travel through this world to finally stand before you, each of us alone before you, all of us longing to hear, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant." May your love, grace, and mercy have dominion in Pella and our leaders as we truly fulfill the promise of this city you founded. Especially at this sacred time of year, oh mighty God, we bow before you and thank you for your love, the sacrifice of Jesus, and the salvation you have offered. May we all accept you, welcome you into our hearts, and follow you. We know that wise men and wise women still seek you. Thank you, and may we continue in your blessings and guidance as this city and people stand out for you. And we pray this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Evelyn. Any...anyone else, any agenda items? All right, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
For.
Is that Banstra? DeYoung? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstra.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, moving on, public hearing regarding the annual sewer cleaning inspection program project bids. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board, including those watching at home on Pella Fiber tonight. As Mayor DeWort stated, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to...for proposed annual sewer cleaning, sanitary sewer, excuse me, sanitary sewer cleaning inspection program. The years that we're proposing that involve the program this evening are the years 2023 through 2027. A little bit of background on this program. Annually, the city televises and cleans the sanitary sewer system. We completely clean and televise the sewer system, excuse me, the collection system, about on a 10-year basis. So the goal is to inspect about 10% of the system every year on this as well. Now, as far as the project is concerned, this evening, on December 13th, we did hold a bid letting on the project. And I believe we had the results of the bid letting on the following page. So Mandy, please go ahead. Now, as far as the low bidder on the project, it was the incumbent, I believe, is the Eagle Sewer, which had a total bid price over the length of time on the five-year program of just over $551,000. As you can see, there's quite a spread between the low bidder and the high bidder on the project. Now, it is important to note that the engineer's opinion of probable cost for all five years totaled just over $1,043,000. Now, after reviewing the bid proposals and checking references, our engineer on the project, which is guarding the associates, is recommending awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Eagle Sewer, the amount of $551,621.75. It is important to note that staff also agrees with the recommendation this evening. And with it, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Okay, council, any comments, questions? Any member of the audience have a comment or question about this particular item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
For.
DeYoung, Spore. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Banstra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. So moving on to the resolution, Resolution Number 6532, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Cost, Receiving of Bids, and Making Award Contract for the Annual Sewer Cleaning Inspection Program. Assume nothing to add, Mike?
You are correct, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For.
Branderhorst, Spore, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to public hearing regarding an application to rezon property general located along Hempstead Drive from agricultural A1 to rural resident RR. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. Mr. Bob Brown has submitted a rezoning application for a parcel that's located just on the north side of Hempstead Drive and just orientate everyone. This map extended, this picture extended further to the south. You see the Eagle Creek subdivision down here. Boss London is located right above here. The area that we're discussing tonight for rezoning action is the red highlighted area. It's approximately 6.63 acre parcel. Now, what's being proposed is a change in the zoning from A1 agricultural over to rural residential. Now, it is important to note that the staff recommendation this evening is a modification of what was put out in the council packet. We are actually recommending the conditional approval with the conditions being that a final plat be submitted within a couple of months of the date of the ordinance approval. And the final plat shall formally divide the RR property from the A1 property. And the reason for this is according to legal on this, what we have here is this is all one parcel located here. And what the applicant would like to do was submit a plat or their plating process after the rezoning is considered by the city council on it. The dilemma that we have is parcel here is an A1A property. The minimum lot size for A1A is 10 acres. And so you've got a dilemma. Do you approve the rezoning first, or do you approve the subdivision first on it? And what the city attorney has recommended is conditional approval of the ordinance with these are the conditions right here that would go into effect once the Pella City Council approved the subdivision, which formally separated this parcel from the main parcel up here. Now, as far as tonight's public hearing and the resulting action that we are recommending, it is important to note that we are recommending continuing the public hearing that were taking place tonight until January 3rd, which would be our first meeting in January. But we're also recommending taking no action of the proposed ordinance tonight. Now, the reason for that is in order to approve a conditional rezoning before the city council considered this, the city attorney has advised us that we need to have the conditions agreed to by the property owner in writing. And unfortunately, we don't have the written statement from the property owner this evening. So we're recommending continuance of the public hearing. We anticipate that we will receive the written ordinance by the property owner prior to January 3rd, and we can take action at that point in time. So, Mandy, we can go ahead and briefly go through the item that we have this evening. Now, we do have a description up on the big board of the rural residential zoning district. And basically, the purpose is to accommodate low-density residential dwelling units on this as well. Now, it is important to note that there is low-density or low-density single-family homes close by, and that would be the Eagle Creek subdivision located over here, and also the Boss London subdivision that would be located up right over here as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the future use land map is concerned, I believe this area was identified for future housing, I believe, on the matter, on that as correct, Jerry. And from city staff standpoint, when we look at it basically from two aspects, from the zoning and what's currently out there as far as single-family residential, and also from a future use land, land use standpoint, we believe it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan on it. Our recommendation is approval of the ordinance subject to the conditions that we discussed earlier. But once again, as far as our presentation tonight, we're recommending that we continue the public hearing on January 3rd and take no action on the ordinance per the advice of legal counsel.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? So we won't take any action on it tonight, take it up again on, continue the public hearing on January 3rd? Okay?
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, probably should, just a motion to extend the public hearing until January 3rd.
I'll make that motion on the advice of the attorney.
Spore.
Okay, Manstra, Spore, any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to extend the public hearing to our next meeting? Mandy, please take the roll.
Banstra.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. We'll move on to Resolution Number 6527, entitled Resolution Approving Award of the Construction Contract for the Boss London Conference Center Repairs. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution would do is actually award the contract for the proposed Boss London Conference Center Restoration Project. It is important to note that on December 6th, council previously adopted plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost, but ultimately awarded deferral of action of the contract itself until we get a chance to review the proposed project alternates, which we're prepared to discuss this evening. This council is also aware, the reason why this project is necessary is in 2020, actually in January 2020, if memory serves me correctly, the facility sustained significant damage due to a frozen water pipe that exploded in 2020. So as far as the proposed contract that we are discussing this evening, it is important to note that the city's insurance policy covers all costs to restore the facility to its original condition and to bring the facility up to code. The two items that would be the exception were that the city would be obligated for its deductible, which is $5,000, plus any alternates that we approved this evening for the project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the alternates are concerned, basically from city staff standpoint, we are recommending not to award on the replacement of the windows that would be in the main conference center in the basement. And the reason for that is there's additional windows that need to be replaced in the facility. And we think it would be, probably we'd be able to receive better bids if we matched them all together and had a complete window replacement for the facility as well. Now, as far as some of the other ones that we have, so alternate number two, we are recommending that this evening, because we feel that once the conference center is restored, it would make logical sense to try to have a restaurant back out at Boss London as well. In order to do that, we do believe that we're in need to replace the kitchen floor and wall and ceilings as well. Now, as far as the addition of a family restroom located on the main floor, we just believe that that's going to be important for the patrons that come to Boss London, particularly the conference center as well. Now, as far as the additional counter and sink, that would be alternate number four. We're not recommending that one either. But we are recommending replacement of five and six are the repairs on the pro shop floor, as well as the eaves or the exterior eaves on the building as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, if we could, please, and take a look at the ultimate bid that we have here. So as far as the base bid, the low bidder on the base bid was foyer construction. The proposed alternates that staff is recommending this evening would be about just over $60,000 from that. So we have a contract, construction contract of $1,070,700 that council were to approve this contract, plus all the alternates on this as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as we stated, that the insurance will reimburse the city to restore all components of the facility that's included with the base bid this evening, that's up to $1,010,000. However, we're responsible for our deductible. In addition, we're also responsible for any alternates that we would approve too. Those total about $60,000 on it as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the engineer on the project, which was Clegar and Associates, they are recommending awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which was foyer construction. Now, as we stated on this and had this considerable discussion on December 6th, this project was significantly over the engineer's estimate. And Clegar provided an explanation that especially with the renovation of existing buildings, where a lot of the unknowns, it was difficult to estimate the cost on. It was a good summary, I believe, is what Mr. Timold stated as well. So the staff recommendation this evening is to award the contract plus alternates, just over $60,000, for a total of $1,070,700. Now, it is important to note that one of the questions that came up on December 6th is what would happen if the city just didn't do the project on it? In talking to the insurance company, what they said, the city would be basically reimburse the actual cash value of the building, which I believe is just over $767,000. To date, we spent roughly $265,000-ish on the project from the cleanup involved on the project. So we'd be left with about a half a million dollars if we did not proceed on the project. In reviewing it, in looking at the intended use of the golf course on it, our recommendation is to proceed with the project and restore the conference center to, for the Boss London Golf Facility on that as well. With that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation. And we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spore.
DeYoung, Spore, discussion?
Has the insurance company, are they on board with this proposal as well, too?
Yes, in fact, what they stated is if the city council were to approve the construction contract, we have appreciation of the facility, which we didn't receive on that as well. And they told me that amount is $505,000, and they're prepared to turn any claim to receive that as well as soon as the contract is approved by the city council. But they've reviewed it, and they are, and they have approved the base bid on this up to $1,010,000. It is important to note, I'm not sure just to remind everyone as well, but this also includes an elevator addition in the facility as well. So we're going to have enhanced functionality between the upper level and the lower level of the facility. And that was in the base bid? That is correct.
Is there any interest in renting the space from anybody? Have you heard any rumblings of that? Because by spending $65,000, $66,000 bucks in addition to what the insurance is reimbursing, this is a completely rentable space up or over this point, right?
Yeah. Traditionally, what was happening at Boss London is the space has been rented out by the Boss London operator on it. It's been designated for that. So whoever operating the Boss London Golf Course is traditionally rented out the conference center as well as the restaurant as well. So from a planning standpoint, right now, the staff is tentatively, that's the intended course. What we have is really is it'd be the management firm that would be operating the Boss London Golf Course on it. And that's what it would be reserved for. But ultimately, that decision, as far as the space, ultimately, that's the decision of the city council. But traditionally, that's what has taken place.
I believe construction would be complete, not completed till the end of like October or something. Was that the timeline?
That is correct. If council were to approve this, I believe it'd be the fall of 2023 when the project would be completed.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion for approval. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Banstra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6533, entitled Resolution Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on the Proposed Vacation of the Public Right-of-Way in a Portion of Hazel Street Located in the Southeast Quarter of Section 34 and the Southwest Quarter of Section 35 in Township 77 North Range, 18 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian in the City of Pella. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And the easy way on this is what this resolution simply does is it establishes January 17th as the public hearing date for proposed vacation of the public right-of-way of Hazel Street that would run north of East Parkway into the Timberview Development. And the easiest way to explain this item on here, just a little bit of background, this is the Timberview Development that council recently approved on it. We had an existing right-of-way easement that extended up into the development, which is this yellow highlighted area located right here. Council recalls, the alignment of Hazel Street is actually going up this way. And so with that, we do no longer need the existing right-of-way. In fact, it'd be a title problem for some of the properties they're trying to develop in residential housing up here if we left it as-is on it. So the developers have requested this vacation that we have right here. And that's really the purpose of it, and Mayor, but we'll have more details to discuss on January 17th as this resolution, once again, just simply establishes the public hearing date for January 17th on this proposed vacation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For.
Manstra, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstra.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6534, entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number One, Final Quantity Adjustment Mislanious Items and Accepting the Public Improvements for the Apron Expansion Project at the Pella Municipal Airport. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what we have this evening is acceptance or proposed acceptance of the airport apron expansion project that recently took place at the Pella Municipal Airport. We do have a description of the apron expansion project located up here on the big board, as well as a picture of the new apron at the Pella Municipal Airport as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, it is important to note that the change order we're proposing this evening actually decreases the amount of the contract. And what this simply is, is a final quantities adjustment. So what we're reconciling is the bid amount by the contractor versus what was actually placed to the materials placed in the ground. And in this case, the change order tonight for the final change order is just over $4,582. Now, if council were to approve this resolution, we started off with the original contract at just over $778,882. Change Order Number One, that we are considering, which is a final quantities adjustment, a deduction of $4,582, we would be left with a total final contract amount of $774,325.25. Now, our engineer on the project was guarding and associates, and they are recommending acceptance of the project. We believe it was completed in accordance with the plans and specifications. The staff is also in agreement with engineer's recommendation, and we are recommending approval of the resolution. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. And we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For.
Branderhorst, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6535, entitled Resolution Approving Accepting the Public Improvements for the Waste Water Treatment Plant 2019 Upgrades Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, very similar resolution to what we just approved with the apron expansion and project. What this resolution would do is actually approve the improvements that were made to the city's wastewater treatment plant. Now, it's important to note that we did approve a contract with WRH on February 4th, 2020. Now, the written origins of this contract were why always necessary is these improvements that we're talking about this evening were necessary to meet the standards that were imposed by the DNR to treat various nutrients that we have listed up here on the big board. There are actually more stringent requirements for these items that we have listed up here as well. Now, as you will see on the following slide, we've made several plant repairs to the wastewater treatment plant. We believe that the repairs will actually put us in a position to extend the life of the facility for approximately 20 years. Now, one of the items that we dealt with during the deconstruction project like this was the project's original completion date was scheduled for December 2021. However, due to the COVID pandemic that happened, one of the items that we dealt with on several projects was delays with... We believe that the repairs will actually put us in a position to extend the life of the facility for approximately twenty years. Now, one of the items that we dealt with during the deconstruction project like this was the project's original completion date was scheduled for December two thousand and twenty-one. However, due to the COVID pandemic that happened, one of the items that we dealt with on several projects was delays with the project as well. Now, it is important to note that the project was ultimately completed on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we do have a summary that is listed up on the big board here, but as you can see, we started off with an original contract of five million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And we've approved various change orders throughout the project, which loses with the revised contract of six million, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-one cents. Now, as far as our engineering is concerned, that was Fox, Grant and Associates, they are recommending acceptance of the project, who believes it was completed in accordance with plans and specifications. Staff is in agreement with the recommendation this evening, and we do have a picture of the wastewater treatment facility located up there as well, a portion, a component of the project as well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation on this item, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or? DeYoung, Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, now, you gotta bear with me through the reading of these next two ordinances. I'm just glad it's the third reading, so I don't have to read it again after tonight. Ordinance number one-zero-two-two, entitled, an ordinance providing that general property tax levied and collected each year on all property located within the Timberview Urban Renewal Area in the city of Pella County of Marion, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Pella County of Marion, Pella Community School District and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for the payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Timberview Urban Renewal Area, the Timberview Urban Renewal Plan, and this is the third reading. Mike, anything we haven't talked about, you probably better go through it a little bit.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to summarize that, and as the mayor Duarte stated, this is the third reading, so I'll try to be brief on this item. Basically, this temporary, this proposed ordinance is for a new Timberview housing development. The housing development is a thirty-six unit housing development that we have that was previously approved by the city council on November fifteenth of this year. Now, the Timberview Urban Renewal Ordinance that we are considering this evening is this purple highlighted area. East Parkway is right here. Hazel Street terminates right up here, and the Polar Golf and Country Club is located over here, so it's this purple area that we have here. And basically, what we're doing, this is the last step of the development process. We're establishing an ordinance so we can capture the incremental value that will be generated on this property. And what we're going to do with that incremental value is ultimately, if the property tax is paid on that property, about half of it will be rebated back to the developer to help pay for the public infrastructure that was, that will be dedicated to the city of Pella. That's the proposed use. This is the last step in the development process. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions on this proposed ordinance.
All right, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or? DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call a roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now, I need a motion for approval and adoption of the ordinance number one-zero-two-two.
So moved.
Or? Carlstone, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. One more. Ordinance number one-zero-two-three, entitled, an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Webster Park Urban Renewal Area in the city of Pella County of Marion, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Pella County of Marion, Pella Community School District and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Webster Park Urban Renewal Area, the remaining parcels. Third reading, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very similar ordinance to what we just previously approved. This one happens to be in the Webster Park Urban Renewal Plan. Just to orientate everyone, if we were to look at this, this is the former Webster School Site that we had here, and if you were to go down there and drive down there now, we have a nice new housing development that is out there. As commonly referred to as the South Main Phase One, that's the blue area. The Main Street Market that's just south of the New Casey's is located right here, and if you were to drive over here, look at this area, we have actually six new housing units that are being built on this parcel as well. The easiest way to explain this ordinance, very similar to this, what we're trying to do is capture the incremental value that is being built on this property. In this case, it would be the six new housing units right here along with the Main Street Market. We previously approved a TIP ordinance for the South Main Phase One Development, so this last ordinance that we have is for Phase Two, which is South Main Phase Two as well as the Main Street Market. Once again, what we're hoping to do is capture the incremental value of the new buildings that are being built on this parcel, and that's what this ordinance simply does. It's the last step in the development process, and with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or?
Brander Horse, support, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Brander Horse, was that Carlstone?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Abstract of Bills number two-one-one-seven, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or? Any discussion, questions? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Bannister?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, any council member, have any other business you'd like to address or like to have addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business that you would like to address the council with this evening? If so, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
John Butler, four-zero-six Franklin Street. I get a little closer to you guys. Have you thought about the millstone in the last month? Do you remember that? Anybody? The millstone? I get blank looks. The millstone is, okay, you know, if you cause a child to, lead a child into sin, Jesus said it would be better if you had a millstone tied around your neck and thrown into the sea. Well, listen, we all share two problems that we cannot fix, sin and death. The Bible says the wages of sin is death, and that's death separated from God. So, sin separates us from God. Why am I talking to you about this? Well, I've been talking to you about things for a year, and I have decided that I can't change you. I think you'd agree with that. I can't change you, but I bet Jesus can change you. So, let's talk about this a minute. I'm not the rulemaker, and I'm not the judge, I'm just a messenger this evening. God gave us the way to live. He gave us Ten Commandments. He talked about seven things that are an abomination to the Lord. Naughty eyes, lying tongue, hands that shed innocent blood, a heart that devises wicked plans, feet that make haste to run to evil, a false witness who speaks lies, and one who sows discord among believers. In Romans, there's another listing of sins committed by people who do not believe in God. They have exchanged the truth about God for a lie. In fact, due to their persistence in committing sins, God has given these people over to their own dishonorable passions. Women have exchanged natural relations for those that are contrary to nature, and the men likewise gave up natural relations with women and were consumed with passions for one another. God is no longer pursuing them to save them. That's in Romans one, eighteen through thirty-two. Now, there are three root causes of sin. Pride, the lust of the eyes, and the lust of the flesh. All these, all sins springs from these root causes. I've got a little handout for you. What can we do to solve our sin problem? Sin can only be forgiven with the shedding of blood, a blood sacrifice, and that is why Jesus came to earth to save us from our sins. His death was the perfect sacrifice to pay for the sins of man for all time. We are, we are all expert at justifying our actions. We rationalize, we're not sinners, we are sinners. But have we tested our actions against God's truth? We must convince, confess, repent, and believe in His offer of forgiveness. And what about death? We're all going to die physically someday. What do you expect to see when you step off this earth? Again, Jesus has gone before us, being resurrected from the dead, and promising the same for those who believe in Him. This is great news, eternal life with the Creator of all things. The final question is, do you fear man or God? As Jesus said, "And do not fear those who kill the body, but cannot kill the soul; rather fear Him, who can destroy both soul and body in hell." So, who do you fear, man or God? My closing here is come to Jesus and live. God wants everyone to be saved. Thank you. Oh, I do have a little, little, little show here, a little, the root causes of sin. We have to deal with it at the roots, and if you want, if you kind of get the idea, well, this is, you know, anger. What's anger? It's pride. What's evil thoughts? It's lust of the flesh. What's envy? It's lust of the eyes. So, we have, we all have this problem. Okay, we can't solve it. When I say we, I mean me too.
My name is Mary Ellen Butler. I live at four-zero-six Franklin. I heard an analogy recently that really struck me, and I wanted to share it with you. So, it's been said before that life is like the game of chess, and we make a lot of decisions and choices. And in the game of chess, there could be a move made that's called the end move, where the opponent, no matter what the opponent would do, he's going to lose. He's not going to win the game. The end move has been made. He can either concede at that point, or he can struggle to try and win, but he's not going to win. The end move has been made. And this analogy is that when God sent Jesus to the earth, He made an end move. The end has been decided. Jesus defeated sin and death, and we can either concede or we can struggle. Anyone else?
All right, then we will adjourn to a policy and planning session to discuss ambulance services. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this, this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on this. And what we're here to talk about tonight is the Pella Community Ambulance, specifically entities that receive service by the ambulance that are located outside of our corporate limits. A little bit of background on this for members in the audience and those watching at home on Pella Fiber. The city of Pella began ambulance services and began operating the Pella Community Ambulance in July of this year. Now, the reason for this, as council member Bannister could tell you and also members of the city council, was a direct result of financial difficulties that were being experienced by the Pella Community Ambulance. Now, in considering this item, I think emphasis on the city council was just to make sure the ambulance continued service to our community, and that was probably the number one goal when we took over, providing the ambulance service. But equally important to note, the ambulance currently services an area that's considerably larger than the corporate limits of the city of Pella. And what we have up here on, on the map is the actual territory of the Pella Community Ambulance, and right here, I'm going to try to highlight that is the community or the Pella corporate limits. And so, we serve a variety of townships that we have, and if I miss any of them or on this, I don't mean to overlook anyone, but currently, we service the Lake Prairie Township. We also service the Summit Township, and we also service the Richland Township, we We service Black Oak as well. And in addition, we also service the city of Lighten, and we also have an agreement currently in place with the city of Bussie. Now, Chief, there's probably others out there that I'm missing on that, but generally speaking, does that hit pretty much everybody?
That does.
Okay. So there's a number of entities that we do service, but when you look here on it, as you can see, basically, our service territory goes clear over to Highway fourteen on the west, and on the east, we extend clear over to the city of Lighten. And basically, if you look down here, I believe we even go down to almost Highway ninety-two to the south. And then, Chief, as far as a good description on, is it the Marion County, Jasper County county line to the north is where we serve? Is that, okay. So that's generally to the north on the area that we serve on this. Now, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. The reason we want to talk about this item in as far as serving on a go-forward basis, I'll state for the record, the Pella Community Ambulance has served this community with excellent, has provided the service, has an excellent service for our community and for the area. I just showed you up on the map for a number of years. And from my perspective, it's an effective service. However, one of the items that we do need to rectify is the financial issue going on a go-forward basis. And what I want to do is just take a break here and briefly update the council where we stand as far as the financial subsidy that's currently involved with the Pella Community Ambulance. When we originally took over the ambulance, we're currently in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, so this would be the fiscal year that it ends on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. What we had anticipated as far as service revenues was just over eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And what we had here was operating expenses of just over one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, which left us with a projected net income loss of just over three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We had an ambulance replacement this year of two hundred and ten thousand dollars, which, when you look at those two up, we had a net increase in cash of projected five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, when we dissolved the nonprofit agency, they had about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in cash and investments to help us offset our losses this year. But overall, when you look at subsidies this year, we are projecting a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar subsidy that we had this year. And it's a little bit higher than when we originally took over the ambulance. I think we told the council at that time, our goal was to try to get this right around three hundred thousand dollars for this year. With it, we had a contribution in here too, but it doesn't look like today it hasn't materialized. And so we haven't included any contributions from any other entities that are currently receiving service from the Pella Community Ambulance. So again, we had a projected deficit of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars this year. Now, looking briefly ahead in two thousand and twenty-four, I want to state that these are extremely preliminary and some of them a little bit sketchy right now. And the biggest one, I would say, is when you look at the revenue up here, you'll notice that we're still projecting eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And the reason for this is it's been a pretty heavy lift so far in getting the ambulance fully implemented into the city of Pella. Chief, we just recently received permission from Blue Cross Blue Shield to bill our insurance on patients that we've had. So our staff is actively working on back billing people for the past six months of service that we've had for the insurance providers. We were recently, within the last thirty days, approved by Medicare and Medicaid as well. So for most of our revenues, it's entirely too early for us to really see, and we're hoping that we're going to be able to hit this eight forty-six this year. And so for right now, we still feel like that's the best estimate out there, but I want to stress, this is preliminary. Now, when we factored in the normal cost of living increases that are being composed or you would anticipate next year, as well as inflationary increases for our operational costs, you're looking at total operating cost of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We're throwing in planning purposes of about a hundred thousand dollars in CIP. If you were to look at the cost of the fleet and replacing the ambulances, that's about the depreciation amount that you should be budgeting to replace your fleet, so it's about a hundred thousand dollars. Looking at next year, if things don't change, or as is, or state status quo, we have, right now, on a preliminary basis, we're projecting a deficit of over five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the ambulance, which is part of the reason why we wanted to talk to the entities receiving.
I slipped the words down, but I didn't get that done.
Please, please mute your microphone when, if you're online. Thank you.
Before I go on, is there any question as far as the ambulance finances, where we're at, what we're projecting on a go-forward basis? But basically, the difference between these two years is we had some increases in personnel costs, as well as inflationary increases, and next year, there's no cash balance to offset the deficits. That's the biggest difference on this. So we're estimating a deficit of over five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the ambulance on it. Now, this council's well aware of this, but for members at home and maybe in the audience, when we talk about deficits with government services on there, such as ambulances, police departments on this, what you're really talking about is this is the amount that would need to be subsidized by taxpayers, property taxes by the city of Pella on it as well. So hence is the need for the discussion this evening, so.
So I have a question. I think I remember in our discussion, there was a state grant that you would get, and I thought we were going to get that at the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Is that not true?
Well, that's an excellent question, Mr. Mayor, and I wish we were getting that at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And Chief, try to help me if I'm off on this, but the reason why we had to start on July first, and it was a heck of a rush to get the ambulance onboard by July first, is in order to qualify for that state grant, it helps to offset the subsidies or helps to offset the cost for Medicaid customers on it, we had to begin operations on July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Now, according to the state, this year, which is actually going to be two thousand and twenty-three, that's, this is what's called our base year. So this is the year where you set your rates for the state grant. Next year, FY twenty-four, once the base year is done, the state has an entire year to come in and audit your books and verify your cost. And so once that audit period is done, then you're eligible to actually receive the grant in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. The grant, we believe, should be around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, what we have preliminary estimates on, maybe a little higher, and it's entirely based on the number of Medicaid customers that we serve on it as well. But it's a three-year process to even get involved and to be eligible for the grant. You know, just in summary, you have to have one year of operations, second year the state gets to audit you, and you qualify for the grant in the third year.
Thanks.
Okay. Before we start showing the township items that we have here, I want to stress, when we contacted the entities, we sent letters out in October to each one of the entities and asked them for a meeting on it. And I was saying today, we've heard back from everybody that we sent letters to, and I've met with most of the people on it as well. And I think, you know, from their standpoint, before we get into our discussions this evening, we try to preface that the matter is, A, we just wanted to alert you that the city of Pella is providing the service, and then B, we also wanted to let them know or give them a warning or a notice on the matter on it, that there will likely be a financial request that would need to take place in order to continue serving in, in the future. And then also, from our standpoint, we wanted to make sure when we contacted the townships in the surrounding area, that they still wanted to receive service by the city of Pella. And we stressed if they did want to receive service by the city of Pella, it was our goal, our, it was our goal to structure a win-win partnership that we continue to provide service in the future. So that's the extent of the discussions that we've had to date. And I believe I've told most of the folks that the next step would be is some sort of proposal by the city council. And that's ultimately what we're here to talk about tonight, is some sort of financial proposal on a go-forward basis on what it would take to actually continue service with the, provide the continuing ambulance services to the entities outside the city of Pella. Now, I want to stress, before I show numbers and talk about items, there's a reasoning why we're going to walk through this process. Everything I'm about ready to show you is preliminary in nature on it, is based on estimates on what we have. But we think it's good for discussion purposes, before we contact the townships, that we have a good base of what we're asking for and what we believe would be a good starting point for discussions on it as well. And I want to state once again for the record, it's the goal and the thought of staff is in our best interest to try to work out an agreement to continue to be able to provide ambulance services in the future. But you also have to start out somewhere on it with the discussions. And so with this, we do have a proposal for council's consideration, but I want to stress again that this is a starting point in the discussions. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, what we have, when we look at areas that are outside the city of limits, what we basically have is the townships only and the city of Lighten that are included in this number. There's other cities that we serve that have service calls as well, but ultimately, when we look at the service calls made by the Pella Community Ambulance, and this would be for their last year, full year of operations, they had just shy of two thousand service calls on it. And if you were to look at that, we estimate our operating cost about one point three million dollars. We're somewhere right around a five hundred and sixty-two dollar average cost per service call. So that means every time the ambulance rolls out of the shop, if you wanted to trace it back to the page, it's a service calls, the cost is about five hundred and sixty-two dollars. But that's the overall calls. We have not done a time study on how long it takes to get to certain destinations or how much cost it is to serve areas outside the city of Pella. This is a complete average on, on it as well. Now, when we talk about the townships in the city of Lighten, during that twelve months that ended on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, we made right around two hundred and sixty-five service calls to those entities. And as you can see in the distribution that we have up here, it is important to note that one of the dilemmas that we're facing, and this is not only for the townships or cities we serve, but just in general, city of Pella and the Pella Community Ambulance is, a good percentage of the calls that we go on are non-billable. We don't have a patient to bill. This is either in support of the public police department, the respective sheriff's departments, and the townships on it, but ultimately, when we do, it could be in support of the public safety departments or even the fire department as well. And so oftentimes, there's not an individual or patient to bill. We still got to staff the ambulance, and we still got to send it to the destination to cover for the emergency on that as well. But in this case, about sixty-one percent of the calls were non-billable. Now, when we looked at the billable calls of that, about twenty-four, not the billable calls, but of the calls, about twenty-four percent of the calls were Medicare and Medicaid calls on that. Now, when we talk about those calls, is Medicare and Medicaid have regulations that you can't charge full rates for patients on that, so it's a fraction of your full rate on it. And in those cases, the Pella Community Ambulance was not able to recover its full charges for those patients. Now, when we look at, when we set rates, and in this case, it applies to the townships in the city of Lighten, only about fifteen percent of the calls were what we would deem patients that we were able to bill full rates for on it as well. So those fifteen percent were the calls that we were able to actually recover our user fees on as well. So let's go ahead on this. Now, what we did was we took a look at just the townships in Marion County. And once again, I want to stress, you got to start off somewhere as far as discussions. But we took a look at the Lake Prairie Township and the Summit Township, and that also includes the unincorporated area of Oddly that we have up there. Now, as far as their numbers in FY twenty-two, we had right around a hundred and fifty-nine service calls to the unincorporated area of Oddly. Now, based on what we had here and going back through the nonprofits' records, the records weren't there, so this is an estimated patient revenue for Lake Prairie. We thought as far as the Medicare, Medicaid, fully insured patients, the user fees were right at over thirty thousand dollars. Now, if you look at that estimated cost, and I want to stress again, that's six hundred and fifty-two dollars every time the ambulance rolls out. They took the average cost times a hundred and fifty-nine, that's how we're getting just under a hundred and four thousand dollars. And again, these are just estimates, and they're for discussion purposes only. So that meant, as far as recovering our fees on there, getting back up to the six fifty-two, we're about seventy-three thousand dollars short for Lake Prairie. And it's the same example that we have for Summit Township as well. And again, I want to stress that these are based on estimated numbers that we have here in reimbursement rates for Medicare, Medicaid, as well as the private insurances, and they're actually, and all these estimates are based on actual service calls that occurred during the last twelve months for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Now, one of the items I want to stress before we go on and we talk about contributions from townships and what is a fair partnership on it, it's very important to understand when you deal with townships, and I believe, and I'm going to state this, and I may be a little bit off, but in order, the township is required to provide fire services, they're not required under state law to provide ambulance services on that as well. And so the reason why I'm stating that is, we go into partnership, I think it's very important that we understand what are the fiscal capacities of townships to actually contribute to the Pella ambulance on this. And as we strategize, try to find a win-win partnership on this, we have to take a look at generally, and we have some rough benchmarks up here, rough estimates, what is our cost to actually serve those entities out there? And you got to take a look at what they're actually capable under state, existing state law to contribute. Now, it's my understanding that I believe they're able to levy for fire protection up to about sixty cents per thousand dollars in taxable valuation on that. And if they choose to provide ambulance services, they can use a portion of their fire levy to provide ambulance services. And that's our understanding on, on this as well. And the reason I'm stating this is, again, for example purposes on where we're starting out with negotiations with the townships on this, is if we can go ahead, Mandy, what we did is we pulled the two thousand and twenty-three budget form. So this would be the current fiscal year that we have right here, and we looked at the taxable valuations and what is currently being levied for fire services by both townships. And we'll do this for all the parties as well, because I think this is good information on it. But when we looked at the Lake Prairie Township up here, they have over just a hundred and eighty-two million dollars in taxable valuations. The Summit Township, we believe, is just over just shy of a hundred and nine million on it as well. Now, based off our research, again, from the Marion County public, of the documents on their budget forms, it looks like both entities are levying the full amount for fire protection services, and this is the amounts that we believe that they levy for fire services right here. And the reason why I'm stating this is currently, it's our understanding, and we may be a little bit off on this, is when you look at the townships, they have to provide fire services, and if they choose to provide ambulance services, it has to come out of a portion of this, what they're already providing for fire services. So I think that's very important for everyone to understand when you talk about trying to structure partnerships, is we may be, when you look at it, we have a service that's an essential service for not only our community, but for the surrounding communities. We're trying to work with our partners on this and trying to provide services to them as well. But there may be legislative items that they can't raise taxes or can't contribute any further on it. So when we look at it, I think it's very important to understand that they're currently levying the max amount, I, we believe, for fire services under here. And any contribution from the ambulance would have to come out of what they're already existing levy in. And this is not only true for Lake Prairie, but this would be true for Richland or Black Oak too, as far as the various townships as well. So any questions on this before we get to the proposal? Well, let's go ahead. Now, I'm going to stress this once again, we believe it's very important to work with the townships in trying to structure a partnership, which allows the city of Pella to continue to provide ambulance service to the townships on it as well. However, I do believe that in this case, I think it's been stated multiple times by the city council in taking over the ambulance, that there needs to be some grace extended on the matter. Generally, when we provide services outside the city of limits, we don't do it at a lower cost than what the citizens of Pella provide that same service. So that's always been kind of one of the foundations that we've worked with in doing this. And so keeping these two concepts in mind, and I want to say that we'll start off with just a draft proposal, but if you look at these as really two benchmarks, we want to try to structure a partnership that's a win-win for both parties, but at the same time, we have to be careful as far as subsidizing the services outside the city limits. We believe, and what we would recommend initially, is that we send a draft proposal to the township that calls for reimbursement of those non-billable calls that we would have, and also reimbursement for our charges for Medicare or Medicaid patients above and beyond. And some of the philosophical reasons for that is when we can look at the city of Pella subsidy, those are, those are the biggest areas that we have as far as the user fees that are not covered by the user fees. That's what's covered by property taxes for the city of Pella. So we believe just the initial draft proposal to both entities, or not both entities, to the entities that use the Pella ambulance service, that it would involve this. What our plan would be is we'd sit down with the townships, and we'd go over the charts that we just had on the financial. We'd take a look at their tax levy. We'd have an understanding what they're currently levying for fire, for services. There likely is going to be questions, what do you have planned for future expenditures on it? And we could talk about their margins, and ultimately, what we would plan to do is get their response back. And once we receive the responses back from the townships, we're going to sit right back down here again with the city council and go over what they feel they're capable of contributing to the city. And from that point, we'll have another discussion where we proceed from there. But that's the initial plan, but ultimately, what this would be is just for the reimbursement, again, of the non-billable calls and the Medicare and Medicaid patients. So that's our proposal. Before we go on to other elements, we'll deal with the ambulance that deal with other items outside of, serving outside the city limits. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to open up the questions that the council may have on this item.
Okay.
Question I have is, we're essentially taking from Peter, the fire department, and Paul, the ambulance. How does that leave the fire department?
Yeah. I think that, look at, that's a very good question. Those are the types of questions that we need to understand. I would also state on there is, we need to understand, that's why I think it's important, just for example, that's why we showed the townships what they're currently levying. That's likely to go support the fire department. If you're talking about taking funds to pay for the ambulance, how would that impact the fire department? That would be one of the questions that we'd like to discuss with them.
Yeah, that's a big.
Yeah. The second item, I think it's also important to understand, and when we talk, just generally with the townships, and I would say there's been a lot of concern on it. There's always been a discussion, well, is there something, some sort of legislation that would allow us to levy a tax separately for ambulance services? My understanding, just to summarize, that's about a three-year process that it would take to actually go into effect. It had to be approved by the voters. And so one of the items that we would have to understand is, if they intended to do that and eventually pass what's called an essential service tax for ambulance services, you'd have to look at what would be contributions for that three-year point up to the point where the voters could potentially weigh in on the issue as well. So those are very good discussions, but our thoughts are, and again, keep in mind, you have to start somewhere. If you wanted to take a look at the subsidies, those are the two biggest areas, that would be the subsidies, and those would be the financial requests. We anticipate we'd have a lot of discussions with the township on what they're actually even able to contribute, but by doing that, we'd get a lot better handle on what's planned for the fire department, what they're currently spending, and what would be the ramifications if we did ask for an enhanced contribution. Not enhanced, but, you know, what the actual cost was to operate the ambulance.
I want to be sure I understand, so this list of billables that you're going to go through, we would at the end of each fiscal year bill the townships for what's coming out of their fire service? Are there any individuals on this menu?
Well, there could be a lot of, again, there's a lot of different ways that you could do this. One of the items, we've talked to the city of Indianola, they serve the townships, but they're also the fire department to the townships as well. So basically, that sixty cents that I showed you up there, Indianola provides fire and ambulance service to them. They require that whole sixty cents comes to the city. You could have an agreement where it's just based on a levy amount off their taxable valuations as used to support ambulance services. And I think what I would say, Mandy, if we can go back to the taxable valuations for the townships, if they're going to do this, this is the amount that they could levy, the most that they could levy for fire and EMS services. The reason why we wanted to bring this to the council's attention before we started these discussions is, we also wanted to point out that both of them, and we anticipate this is going to be other entities that we deal with, are currently levying the max amount for fire services. So if they chose to So if they chose to contribute to their ambulance services, it would have to come out of the max amount that they're already levying for fire services.
Mandy, could you go back to the slide that showed the fiscal year? I think it was twenty-four. It was back, that showed the two fiscal years, one in twenty-three.
We caught the financial breakdown. The financial stuff towards the front, man, yeah.
So then, when you, Mike, when you figured the per charge, did you take, for, let's use twenty-four as the example, did you take that one point three million at the hundred thousand capital improvements and divide by two thousand approximately?
Yeah, it's going to be a little higher doing that, because we're actually, we intend the one point three is what we've been using, so it's actually a little bit higher.
Because you got to put money away for the capital expenditures too.
Yeah, that's, that's it. And so, again, when we talk about six hundred and fifty dollars, that's an average cost that was really based off of, I think we had about one point three, if you look at their, actually using the depreciation method on the one point two million in the current year is where we came up with the one point three divided by two thousand, it's about six hundred and fifty-two dollars. But again, I want to say on that average cost, and Mandy, if we go back to the math, when you provide ambulance service to this big territory in your station right here, these calls don't take as long normally as, as calls where you have to travel considerable distance. So again, that's just the average call on, on it, divided, total expenditures divided by total service calls. We haven't done any time studies or anything like that. So we thought for discussion purposes, that, again, that would be an easy way to explain things.
And the other thing, Greg, I don't want you to put you on the spot, but could you, you gave some statistics, I think the good, the rest of the council should hear, on what other counties have done for that tax or how successful or non-successful they've been. If you want to come to the, if you've got a good enough voice, or we can all hear.
I can probably talk loud enough for you. There were eight different counties, most of them up in the northern Iowa, that actually put up the essential service tax up for vote. Five of them actually passed it with the vote in November. There was a KCCI, you can look it up on KCCI, that did an interview with one of the counties that actually voted down, and they asked the ambulance director for that county, you're not, you're not going to get this money, what's going to happen? And they said, well, there's a chance that they're going to have to wait until we're available, because we just don't have the money to buy the equipment needed or the personnel to staff it. So they might have to wait forty-five minutes to an hour to receive an ambulance. We'll still try and serve them, but there's going to be a gap.
Was that a city service, a city providing service?
That was, I can't, I don't think it was, it's a cast, like, I don't want to say a county that's wrong. It's up by Mason City to have that, so.
Mason City's in Serra Gorda.
Somewhere up north. There was, like, I said, all Angeles counties were up north.
And I think everybody goes watching and listening in, and those here need to, need to realize it's we gray-haired folks that are causing the problem. The, the gap between what Medicare pays and the cost of running the service is substantial. And there's more and more of us.
And I think it's true, Mike, that even if you were making a million dollars a year on Medicare, we can't charge you for the difference. That's illegal, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, Mandy, can you go back to the slide, the last slide? Do you have any input on the proposal? What's the half of saying, just drafting a proposal and then having a conversation with, with the various other entities?
You got to have a starting place. And then you bump up against reality.
Fred?
Can we run a scenario for Lake Prairie Township with that number?
Yeah, I think we have it right up here. Mandy, if we can go back, I believe, two slides. For example purposes, we'd be looking somewhere right around for discussion purposes on what it would be.
That, so, yeah, so that would be the cost, but the total revenue that you bring in was, what, a hundred and fourteen off the tax?
Yeah, it got down to a hundred and twelve thousand.
Or a hundred and ten, yeah.
I just want to know what the number you're going to build me.
Well, that's, that's going to be the discussion, trying to come to an agreement.
Well, I think now you're saying we got to build me for every unbillable call, plus the difference of Medicare. And I'm working on a hundred thousand dollar budget with my Mac and my, I don't have a lot of wiggle room.
Yeah.
And I think we'd have that discussion. You were here in June saying that we did not have the funds that you were thinking about. And I don't appreciate the thing that was put on KNI as we can, saying that we haven't been to the table negotiating, because we have been, we just don't like our answer. Didn't matter trustees a week ago and approved that we do not have the money. We are not robbing from our Fire Department to give to ambulance. Can't, this doesn't happen. If you want a new bill to go through, it's a supervisor position, not trustees. So that's why we've been a little difficult to work with, and.
So what you're saying is Lake Prairie Township has no money to contribute, none at all?
No, we made an offer, but it didn't seem to have the token.
Oh, okay, so there was a discussion and there was an offer?
Surely with an offer. But it was for the total. I don't like, Lake Prairie Fire includes that whole area.
Yeah.
I'm not impressed at all that you're trying to split us apart. We're one entity, all that money comes through Lake Prairie Township. You're coming here and splitting Summit, City of Light, and Black Oak, you're splitting everybody apart. We work as a whole as an entity, we have forever. We've got one of the best state Fire Departments in the state. We manage well, we've got the best volunteer organization in the state as far as I'm concerned, and that's because we've taken care of it.
And I think that was Mark's question, or important part of this question.
The council knows why we're being difficult to work with. And we're not being heard. We've talked with our team, we've talked with other people, and Calvin, they're just not listening to us, I don't think.
Are there many townships in the state that run EMS as well as fire? Is that a very common entity?
I'm, well, I'm not aware of a township that runs. It doesn't mean they're not out there, I'm just not aware of it. I think from our standpoint, what we would do, I think, when you look at these costs on here, is the proposal would be, how do we account for the seventy-three thousand dollars that we have up here, the twenty-seven? We'll get a response back, and the response is, is hopefully, they'll give us their position on what they want to have, and hopefully, we'll be able to understand what they're currently levying for, for fire support, what items that pays for, and we can have a discussion back here on it. And if it is, I would also state, if it is a Marion County issue, that's the first question that's going to be asked too, is what is being spent with existing property tax revenues as well. So we're going to need to have to have that understanding and try to solve, solve the issue and working together. Mayor?
Could you elaborate a little? When you say everything is funneled through Lake Prairie, does that mean?
Summit, City of Light, and everything is funneled through the Fire Department. Or it all goes in a Lake Prairie checkbook? I will be the new clerk, as January, that happens, it has been. We've both been on for, I'm not sure we told her to be dead, but it's kind of one of those jobs. We've been on for twenty-plus years, and we have a lot of new town trustees that just joined organizations since October, since the election. We're trying to bring them up to date where we're at. We've lost a lot of the old, the old people have moved on. And that's the way that funnel has always been that way for fire protection. That's sixty-two cents, Summit pays us, you take care of the Fire Department, we pay the bills. We meet every year at least once or twice during the year to discuss how we run the organization. I spend out twenty-eighteen agreements every, first March every year to every one of them for an agreement for the amount of money that they pay, which you were showing up here. I have that listed here also. And we've had a great organization, it's worked wonderful until this.
So that's Black Hawk and all the?
That's Black Oak, City of Light, and Summit, Richland, and Lake Prairie.
So is there a board that everybody is represented on?
I think the truth is, it's worked well, but the charitable, the ambulance failed, because there wasn't enough money. You know, the, the nonprofit failed.
Nonprofit failed forty years, I don't think they called that a failure.
Well, it wasn't going to last next year. They, they were running out of money.
There's new rules and regulations. That was a nonprofit organization set up by people from the City of Pella, from the townships. That didn't work anymore, I agree with that. Also, I don't know, it's back to Mark's comment. And you said it too, is we're not funded for emergency ambulance, for medical training or transportation of people. We're funded for fire and acts of God, as far as I'm concerned, that's accidents, groundings, chemical spills, and anything else that happens that's out of anybody else's control, and that's what we use that money for. And that keeps getting more and more expensive as this bike basket gets more and more busy. And another thing, we look down the road, is the City of Pella will probably be annexing some of the subsidiaries around our area, our funding will be going down. We have no way, there is no ceiling, I mean, we're on a ceiling to a downed project as far as our money revenue coming in. The only way we get revenue more is if assessment goes up, which the City of Pella, and we live on too, assessment goes up, we get more money to play with. But that's basically inflation as far as I can see. There's nowhere to find any more money.
Mandy?
And I don't want to send a volunteer fireman out there with a twenty-year-old suit or a ten-year-old backpack. We have one of the best volunteer organizations, and they're running very, very efficient. The ambulance ran very efficient, and the volunteer organization should. And it changed that mentality for some reason to go to full salary. Out of my control, but that does increase costs dramatically.
Okay. Anybody who has any more comments, questions? I think, why do we have, we have a lot of people?
I do have a question. Joanne and White from Summit Township.
Yeah.
How much exactly do you get from Medicare, Medicare patients?
As far as?
One person, you make one call to a Medicare, how much is that?
Chief, what's the typical amount that we're?
It's typically around three hundred, three hundred and thirty dollars is what we reimburse when the cost is six fifty-two, so we're lost.
Okay, can you explain to me why there's been some Medicare patients or Medicare checks, reimbursements to the, to some ambulances that are six hundred dollars?
That would probably be for a transfer, I'm assuming, like Iowa City or?
No, it was a call.
The average is three hundred, three hundred to three hundred and thirty.
Well, I'm just thinking about the six fifty-two, and I know that is one of the items that you put in the letter, October nineteenth, when you said it, that it was Medicare patients was causing an issue. And I looked in the, the census, and we don't have that many in Summit Township of Medicare patients, according to the U.S. Census that was taken. And I was just curious why you were telling us, when we sat down with you, that it was two hundred cap, you thought, and three hundred is fine, but yet some are reimbursing up to six hundred dollars. So that kind of brings that bill down a little bit for Summit Township.
Yeah, I guess I don't know what you're referring to. I'd have to look at the claim on it. It's my understanding it's been three hundred dollars, and that's the number that we've consistently been using, so.
It is an average of about three hundred to three hundred and thirty. It all depends on what kind of Medicare they have, are they Medicare A, Medicare B?
No, this was based Medicare, and it was from the City Hall, an actual bill that was paid by Medicare, six hundred dollars. And it's not just one, it was a number of them. So I, I, I'm just thinking that maybe, and the non-billable calls, I, God, I hate that, you know? I hate that, that you go out and you sit there and wait for something to happen. That's terrible. Is there any way to, to minimize those, since they're kind of sort of wasting time?
Well.
Is that a policy thing with the ambulance committee perhaps? If they could address that?
Greg, Greg, could you answer that question?
I'll, let me go, let me.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
You know, so there's, there's no way to not go to the, the non-billable calls. I mean, we have to go to that.
I wouldn't say from my perspective, any time you get in negotiations, service levels are always a point of discussion as well. So if there's any?
Well, I would never want it, not have the ambulance there if they are needed, but if we just?
Yeah, if there's any discretion that we can't have on it, you know, we'd be happy to discuss that item with you. Keep in mind, you got to start somewhere. This is what we believe that the cost would be out there that we'd be looking at. And that's been one of the questions that I've tried to answer with you guys on it. And I think that's about the number roughly that we've been talking about. That's going to be the starting point. We'd be happy to sit down and discuss the service levels. But ultimately, what our plan is to come back to the City Council and get a better handle on what's currently being levied for fire services within the townships. And also inform the council what we, what's capable or what they wish to pay for the service on a go-forward basis.
Right.
That's the plan.
So, Mike, the, the outcome tonight, just what we're trying to work on, is simply the council says, yeah, let's get to the table with each of the entities and start the discussion.
That's it, yes.
We don't want to land on anything here tonight, or just simply.
That's correct.
So, okay.
Yeah, we're not making any decisions tonight, other than to have a conversation with everybody, see if we can come to some mutually acceptable agreement. I mean, that's, that's what negotiation is. You know, you, you, Fred's explained very well what kind of revenue potential there is out there, and it's a finite amount. We're looking, we're looking at a subsidy for, from the City of Pella, our taxpayers that live in the city, subsidizing things that happen outside the city. So we have to justify in our mind that cost.
Absolutely.
Because that's our job.
You bet.
And if we come at each other in an adversarial rogue way, that's not going to help anybody. We got to lay the facts on the table, and what we can do, we can do, and then we have to make some decisions. I don't know why we would be able to have a discussion about it.
Absolutely. I agree completely. I don't, I don't want to sound like I'm, I don't want the ambulance service, because I think that the, the patrons of Summit County or Summit Township desperately need it. And they want to know that when they call nine-one-one, that the ambulance is going to be there. That's not it at all. I'm just trying to kind of come down on the cost, because as has been stated, there's not any more money for it. You know, we have to take from the Fire Department. Well, that's not right for the Fire Department, they're going to need more equipment. So I'm just trying to hold down some of the costs, so.
Yeah, if everybody got that six fifty you mentioned in the Medicare, this discussion would be a lot easier.
Absolutely, it would be.
So maybe, you know, those examples that you had, if you could share them with Greg, you know, to see, you know, if that was a one-off or what that is. Because that, I agree, we've always been talking that, that three hundred level of reimbursement half of what, what, what the real charge is.
And a hundred and fifty, I believe, for Medicaid.
Yeah, Medicaid is what, yeah, we've been less than that.
I haven't asked for them. I just asked about, I just asked about Medicare to a couple of other places that the city actually was doing the billing. The city was receiving that money. So it would be the same setup as what Pella is, is wanting to do.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly.
That's the research that I've done to some of the local towns around. That's how I got that.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Yes, yeah. If you get quite a way to double it, let us know.
I know, right? Wouldn't that be great? And that was just based Medicare, it wasn't even the Advantage Plan. So that's why I was so confused, why, why you're only using the three hundred, and that's why I wanted to ask.
It sounds to me like what we really ought to be talking about is preparing a campaign, a ballot measure for the twenty-four election to levy a small charge for ambulance service out in the countryside.
for the twenty-four election to levy a small charge for ambulance service out in the countryside.
That would be at the county level, probably.
That's the county supervisor.
Yeah. You know, I'm with you. We can't jeopardize our good fire service. That's very important, too. And I don't know how much longer that would be all volunteer.
Yes, sir.
Doug Hahn, Summit Township. Is there any kind of, the unbillables is the big thing, the unbillables. And I don't quite understand that, why it can't be billed, you don't have insurance, whatever, can't pay, whatever. Is there a state, county or city fund somewhere for something like that, a charitable type thing? That would help with that. I mean, within the county, I think there's, used to be some kind of a fund for those kind of things. And also with your county development commission, sometimes there are funds that they look for things to pay for. Is there something that could be looked into for something like that?
Could we, could we start with a good definition or examples of the unbillable calls?
Sure.
Either Mike can say or Greg.
I'll give you an example. Last week, was it Thursday, we had all the car accidents over by Oplie. There was three car accidents, all those cars rolled over. We dispatched three ambulances for three different calls. We get there, two of them roll over, then the extrication was supposedly needed. We get there and they don't, they're okay. They don't want to go to the hospital. Can't bill them for that. We're responding. You've got your, somebody falls down and accidentally hits their life alert button. They're not really hurt, they don't even realize that they hit their life alert button. We respond because there was a fall, can't bill for that. You know, the police officers pull somebody over, they don't know if they're drunk or if they've got something else wrong. We've gotta respond, determine if it's a medical condition or not. We can't bill for that. And there's a lot of different reasons we can't bill.
Chief, also correct me if I'm wrong, grass fires.
Yep, standby for grass fires.
That happens frequently in the townships that we go out and tend in support of the fire department, correct?
That's correct.
Is an ambulance required every time the fire department goes out?
It is, I think, under the NFA rules that they are supposed to have an ambulance on standby for them because that's a dangerous situation.
Yes, Keith.
Wasn't a couple meetings ago, you guys discussed about garnishment or-
Yeah.
Pelos citizens?
No, it's not just Pelos citizens on the garnishment. It's gonna, it's gonna be, yeah, I don't know the best way to show this, but with the garnishment, we're participating in the state offset program. And this would be for anyone that is a billable patient that does not pay their bill for the ambulance service. The state has a program that if they owe, if they owe funds to the city for ambulance services, that they will withhold their income tax refund until that's paid. And so we did approve membership or an application to be a part of what's called the offset program. But that's for people that, that would be for patients that owe a debt to the ambulance service.
So private, if somebody's private payer and then they don't pay-
Correct.
Potentially could get their tax refund withheld and get that paid.
Unfortunately, we can't do that for Medicare or these unbillables that Chief is talking about.
Steve has a question.
Stephen White, Lake Prairie Township. I've also been on the ambulance board for a few years. I do want the council to know that the townships for years was paying a thousand dollars a month, total of twelve thousand dollars. Two and a half-
Two years ago, Greg, two and a half years?
August nineteen, I think it was. We went to two thousand dollars until we got in negotiation with the city. And it was, it was me, I brought to the Lake Prairie people, I said, hey, if we're gonna turn everything over to the city and they're gonna charge us, let's quit paying the two thousand dollars a month, which happened a year ago. Would that be correct, August of twenty-one? Okay, I was thinking a little later, that's fine. So we have been contributing for probably thirty-five years of the forty-year spread.
We've contributed every year since it started till a year ago.
So, yeah, that we've contributed to keep it. So if we wouldn't have done that, I don't know the exact dollars, would have been in trouble a few years down the road. And in the city's defense, if you go back and look, the city contributed for the first few years of forty-three thousand dollars till the ambulance got going, they started making money, then the city quit. And I can't tell you how long they did that, but I know they've done that for three or four years.
Yeah. The city also provided the facility for the ambulance to operate out as well.
Well, you charge a dollar, we just never- So is that a bill we can collect on that? Uh, you can try it if you own it. You gotta pay yourself. Rent in arrears.
Well, I think, I mean, the takeaway is to try to have some good face discussions and see if there's something that can be worked out. That's in the best interest of everyone, understanding all those facts, that there's a limited amount of money and the cost is the cost, so. Yes, Fred?
Can I still go back to the fact, why can't you work with us as a whole?
Andy, can you go back to the math, please? The reason we, the reason we've chosen the entities, A, we weren't aware of your organization and your reliance, your contracts on it. We have individual entities and we have Summit Township, we have Richland and Black Oak, and then you have the Lake Prairie Township, and we're dealing with two different counties on the matter. And so from our standpoint, if you look at the service for the city of Palahoun, keep in mind, getting into this, we were unaware if anyone even wanted to continue ambulance services with the city of Palahoun. Or for instance, if the Mahaska County people wanted to go be served by a Mahaska County hospital on the, on the matter as well. And so the reason why we chose to work individually is we have a big service area here. A, the second reason is we're dealing with two different counties on, on the matter. The third reason is, is if you look down here, we're also dealing with various cities on it as well. And we thought it was important that each individual hear the same message and understand the reasons why we were reaching out to them. We're not opposed on a go-for basis to try to work with everybody, but please keep in mind, when you're looking at these areas out here, these big areas that we're trying to serve on it, our cost increases the further we get away from Pelon. We may have to make decisions accordingly on the matter. That's why we've tried to approach it on an individual basis on it as well.
Well, I get money from Mahaska County right now for Richland and Black Oak. Oh, it's filed into us because that's where it's always been with fire. I don't know why that has to change.
So all of the, all of these areas go to one, one-
Lake Prairie.
The sixty cent levy all goes to one?
We have twenty-eight agreements with all of those. Are you also, I guess, one question, are you gonna change mileage from base point? I mean, if you go out twenty-five miles, it's different price than if you go out four miles?
I think that's all part of the discussions that you have to look, look at on the matter. But the answer to your question is, we had a number of different entities that we're dealing with and we're not sure who's speaking for who on it. The only way you're gonna find out who's representing it is to contact each one of them. That's why we tried to do on the matter. No other reason other than that. We were just giving a notice on it and if you guys want to work all as one, I mean, I don't really have an issue with that. My only concern would be, is if we start talking about cost or response times on big areas out there, keep in mind, you have to look at the city's perspective, too. It's more expensive the further we get out on items as well. And the other reason too, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, with Mahaska County Hospital, that's a taxpayer-funded hospital, is that correct?
Yeah.
Councilmember Banstra, they provide ambulance services right now, so technically-
The county runs that and all the Mahaska County property taxpayers have an item for that on their taxes.
Right.
They're technically paying for ambulance service, but, yeah, if you live north of Perry, where would you want the ambulance to come from? That's really the philosophical question that those folks need to ask, you know? So, yeah. And then back to Fred's comments, too, and he's right, you know, going back to my Lake City Clerk days, for years, there was what would I call just a informal agreement among everybody, checks were just sent. And then at some point, then I'm sure an attorney tried to earn his or her stripes, said you need to do twenty-eighty agreements. And then everything had to be formalized then at that point. So there, there's now twenty-eighty agreements or there were, I think that's true, yeah, between Lake Prairie and all the other entities.
And we, we met together a week ago tonight, and I mean, it's, we're kind of a group. I mean, we're, the fire department covers all that. The fire department and the city of Palahoun's fire department is joined to one extent. We share firefighter, firefighters, we share the building that our vehicles are in. And on certain fires, we share fire equipment. And just my personal, you know, I want to have the ambulance service that we've had for years. I mean, I've been on the board, went through some issues. I was involved in it when we didn't have a director and run the, run the ambulance for six months. And I'll be honest, it sucked. You know, but, yeah, we want to work out with you, but it's, we're, we're struggling. I mean, we met over a year ago, we started meeting. And then I was on that because of being on the ambulance, trying to figure out how to get it turned over to the city and all them. And now, and, you know, we did a lot of talking and it just, no matter what we do, there's not gonna be probably any winners in this scenario. But I want to thank you guys for listening to us tonight.
And Greg, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're on pace this year for the largest number of calls ever by quite a way, right?
That one that just got paged out was two thousand seventy-three. Our previous record per year was eighteen eighty-six. We're gonna be well over twenty-one hundred with the addition of the cottages. I'm expecting next year to be over twenty-three hundred.
So the demand is going up, not down, that's for sure.
Can I ask what you, what you charge per mile? And is it per loaded mile or just round trip? For what, how is that, how is it that you bill your mileage? For the other?
Chief.
We just raised the, what, twenty-nine dollars a mile or we just raised it to-
Loaded?
Loaded miles, yep.
So you don't charge anything, go out, just once you load the patient?
Just load, yep. Yeah, we can't legally charge for going out.
I think one thing after I was, got involved in this, what came very clear to me, I can see why the hospital didn't want it.
What does the city do for the unbilled calls? What, what, how does that work with your budget?
It's property taxes by the citizens of Palahoun.
Did you have another fund that pays for that or is this just-
It's property taxes by the city of Palahoun.
You, you saw the projected deficits there. That comes out of our general fund. And that general fund is funded with property taxes paid into our budget from the residents of the city, so. It's, you know, it's like the swimming pool and the library and everybody, everything else that the city provides services. It's paid for by taxpayer budget. So, you know, that's part of the reason, you know, it's incumbent on us to try to protect our, our taxpayers, too. And so that's why we have to have these discussions.
When you took over the ambulance service, what actually, I mean, did they just hand it over? I, I'm not sure, did you buy it from the service or how did you get ahold of it, I guess? Did it come with assets? Did it come with cash amounts? Did it, I mean, obviously you took all the ambulance and all of the equipment that's on board?
That hundred and eighty thousand there on that page shows, that, that was the old fund, right?
That was the liquid assets.
That was the liquid assets, yeah, but we, we assumed all the assets as well, we had operations.
And the employees. They, they came in and got part of Ivers and insurance and so too.
And the tab for new ambulance.
Yeah.
Well, I think the takeaway is to, it sounds like maybe I'll try to meet with the whole group as a whole, some representatives.
Yeah. Who should I contact from your group? Would that be Steve and Fred? Okay, Fred, okay.
Calvin, you'll stay involved?
And ask for a big raise.
Ask all you want.
All right. We have two additional items on ambulance, both of these items on there. As far as, Andy, if we can go to the last, the second slide before we get to the board, please. We have a rate ordinance that we have for paramedic tier services. And so this would be entities that request just paramedic services that we have. Our current charge is at a hundred and fifty dollars. And going back through these agreements for another city that uses paramedics quite frequently on it to cover our cost on the paramedic services, we're proposing to go up to two hundred and fifty dollars. And Chief, I think this is similar to what Knoxville charges as well for paramedic tier services at two fifty. So with that, we do have an ordinance that we would be proposing in January that would increase the paramedic tier rate from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars. Okay? All righty. Okay, and let's go back to it. This item actually came up at our temporary advisory board. If council may recall, we established a temporary board to help with the transition of the Pelon Community Ambulance to the city of Palahoun. The board's terms expire on December thirty-first this year. There's been a lot of heavy lifting over this past six months that we've done and the board has been of extreme value to the city of Palahoun. I believe at the last meeting, Chief, some questions were asked, what's the future mission and the board direction of the board on it as well? And from our standpoint, we believe that the implementation at the city of Palahoun is done. We've just recently been approved on all billing now, so we can finally begin billing everybody on this as well. And so from our standpoint, talking to staff on this, we're not sure about the continuation of the board as an advisory board on for the implementation of the ambulance. I believe the recommendation from staff would be to dissolve the board and also recognize those individuals that served for a very long time on the board for their service, to not only our community, but the community, the other communities that have been served by the Pelon Community Ambulance.
And then would the idea to be to create a new board, advisory board, that have representatives from certain areas?
Well, let's assume under this scenario, we work out a new agreement with the townships on it. We very well may have a new board over it that oversees and, you know, the accountability of the ambulance, the operations of the ambulance. That's quite, I mean, that could be one option on it, is to have a joint board.
Yeah, if you have a board, it should have representatives, right? Maybe have a problem with the plan there, dissolve that board, recognize. Depending on the outcome of discussions, if we can work on establishing, do you have a new board?
Okay, all righty. I think that's it as far as the ambulance tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank all of you for coming, your input, appreciate it.
If I could circle back to other business just a moment, please. I was asleep at the switch. The chairperson of CDC, on behalf of herself and their group, want to really thank us for our support of their new manual. They think it's absolutely awesome. Gerald, for his efforts and the consultant that came in, they're thrilled. They've got something to really work with.
Okay. So we're gonna go, we have a couple closed sessions, so we won't have, take any action probably afterwards. So if you guys don't mind, we'll have it here. We're gonna get going here, so I have a motion to enter into example session pursuant to Iowa Code Chap. twenty-one point-
nine to discuss employment conditions of employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements.
Yes, support, please.
Sporer, Branderhorst, Banstra, Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have a motion to enter into exempt session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point nine to discuss employment conditions of employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements.
No move.
Sporer. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, DeYoung, Sporer.
All, all of them.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Andy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Banstra?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five to discuss purchase or sales to pick to the real estate only where free insurance exposure would be reasonably explicable to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. Motion?
Yes.
Sporer.
Hopkins, Sporer. All in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Andy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Banstra?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Closed session, so Iowa will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sporer?
Banstra, Hopkins.
Yes.
All in favor, please say yes.
The default secondary.
Andy, please call the roll.
Banstra?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.